Any School Board Regular Meeting? Understand this evening, we are joined by the DECA students who are going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. Although, DECA, would you like to share with us what's been going on this year?
Hi, my name is Kaitlyn Winger. I am a current senior at King George High School and I am the co-Vice President of Finance for DECA. And one thing that I really enjoy about DECA is the networking opportunities that are present.
Hello, my name is Kamora White and I'm the co-Vice President of Hospitality. And one thing I really enjoy about DECA is the environment and the people involved.
Hi, I'm Leah Paz. I'm the COV P marketing and I'm a sophomore. And one thing I like about DECA is all the opportunities that DECA offers.
Hi, I'm Ava Cravelling. I'm your other co-Vice President of Marketing. I'm a junior this year and one of my favorite things about DECA is competing with all of my fellow officers.
Hello, my name is Amira Tate. I'm a junior this year and I am the Vice President of Career Development. And I, my favorite thing about DECA is being able to travel to different places. At this time, we would like to ask of all of you to become professional members of our DECA chapter.
Good evening, I'm Dee Strauss, the Advisor of our DECA chapter here at King George High School. And it gives me great pleasure to bring these officers to you to do the pledge this evening. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Strauss and all of our DECA students. It's great to hear from you this evening. All right, at this time, we have, Mr. Bush is participating remotely this evening. Mr. Bush, can you hear us online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. All right, so we, as the Board, will take a motion to approve your remote attendance. But I would ask that you, can you please first state your location and your reason for participating remotely this evening?
Yes, I'm in Salinas, California. I am with family. We're celebrating, my brother-in-law died a few years ago and his wife is having her 75th birthday. And my wife and I are also celebrating birthdays this week, so we need to be with family.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Bush. Do I have a motion to approve the remote attendance of Mr. Bush this evening?
A move that we approved the remote attendance of Mr. David Bush.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Ms. Rinko, do we have any public comment this evening? All right. All right, so as we have public comment here this evening, I'll ask that you come to the podium. Please state your name, your relation to the school division, your voting district, and that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. All right, and so we have Ms. Dee Strauss.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Boyd's staff and community. My name is Dee Strauss, 10362 Ridgeway Drive in the James Madison. I am the Marketing Teacher and DECA Advisor at King George High School, and I'm here to make a request of you this evening. Last year, this board changed the calendar to make the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving holidays for staff and students. And I'm requesting that this change be made again this year and also considered for future calendars for the month of November.
All right, thank you, Ms. Strauss. All right, next on our agenda, we have a presentation on an accreditation update. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, this evening, we are joined by Stacy Hildebrand, who is going to provide some very good information about our school division concerning accreditation. I don't want to steal Stacy's thunder, so I'll stop there and let you take over, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Boyd and community members. I'm here to present the updated accreditation data. But before I do that, I would like to first acknowledge and thank our school board members, our school administrators, all staff, students and parents for their tireless effort to keep our students first in every decision over these last three years. It is very evident that we have all worked together as a team to provide all the possible resources to our students during these challenging times. As I share the data tonight, you will see the positive outcomes of all this dedication. So to begin with, the SOLs administered. I would like to review what tests were administered each year. So going back to school year 1920, that was accreditation year 2021. So in fall of 2019, if you can remember back, we administered high school SOLs at the high school in the fall of 2019. In the spring of 2020, the SOLs were waived by the State Department. School year 2020, 2021, that fall of 2020, the high school SOL were administered as well. The State Department did put out a memo stating that any student that was in a classroom that needed the verified credit that fall 2020, they could delay it to spring 2021. But we decided as a school system that we would try as best as we could to have our students take the SOL during that course time, that semester. And then spring 2021, grades three through eight, and of course, SOLs were administered. However, the State Department did put out that students could opt out. And if they did opt out, they could be given a remote test. So the teachers and administrators, we all coordinated that they would take an at-home remote test. So school year 2122, that fall of 21, which was last fall, everything was pretty much back to normal. We were not doing any opt-outs at that time unless a parent decided that they wanted to opt out. And there was no more remote online testing. So in the middle of all that, if you can visualize, so school year 1920 was accreditation year 2021. That was waived accreditation. Accreditation is always one year ahead of the school year. And then the next year was also waived. So we have data going all the way back to 1819. So the next slide I will share with you is accreditation status. So the data from 1920, accreditation year 2021, the Superintendent of Public Instruction waived accreditation. School year 2021, accreditation year 2122, the Department of Ed also waived accreditation. So last school year, 2122, resumed for accreditation year 2023. So for two years, we were waived accreditation. So it kind of gets a little messy when you start talking about accreditation year the year before. It's hard to kind of keep track of that. So the next slide is accreditation status by school. So we went back to 1819, which was our last data point. I say due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the last data scores were based on school year 1819, which would have been accreditation year 1920. So we have three years. You got 1819 based from 1718, because that was the school year accreditation year 1819. School year 1819 based, school year and accreditation year 2020, 2122, fully accredited. And then last year, 2122 accreditation year 2223, fully accredited. So we have been fully accredited all three years. So to go over accreditation, the overview of this, it's broken down into indicators, performance levels, and accreditation ratings. So academic achievement is in math, English and science. Your target is, for English, is 75%. For your math and science, it's 70%. Then you have an academic achievement indicator, which is all of your subgroups, chronic absenteeism, your graduation complex index, your dropout rate, and your college career and civic readiness index. That all comes under the academic gap. Then you have your performance levels. And they are color-coded, level one, green, level two, yellow, and level three is red. And then you have three accreditation ratings. You have accredited with conditions and accreditation denied. So the next slide goes just a little bit deeper with the school quality indicator academic achievement. Your level one, it, school demonstrates acceptable performance above the state benchmark, which is 75% for English, or adequate improvement from level two. Level two is school demonstrates performance within specified ranges, which represent either achievement near level one or adequate improvement from level three. And then your level three, school demonstrated performance below the benchmarks for level one and level two, or schools has stayed at a level two or level three for four consecutive years. And then the next slide talks about the other school quality indicator, which is your achievement gap. Now, the achievement gap has, like I said, the three levels, the green, the yellow and the red. So level one may have one student group. Now, we have subgroups in this. And there are your Asian, Black, economically disadvantaged, your English learners, Hispanic, multiple races, which multiple races is new this year for accreditation year 2223. It was not in the 1819 accreditation. And then students with disabilities and your white subgroup. So level one may have one student group rated as a level two, and no student group can be rated at level three. Level two may have more than one student group rated as a level two, and no more than one student group rated as a level three. And then level three is two or more groups rated as level three. So the next slide gives you a full picture of our academic achievement and our achievement gaps for all schools. So we're fully accredited, 2223. School year 2122 is where we get this data from. The asterisk, when you see an asterisk, this is our level coloring based on cumulative three-year performance resulting in the higher final performance level than the current year. So we're pulling from three-year rate, 1718, 1819 and 2022. And chronic absenteeism this year is waived for accreditation 2223. It will resume next year. Okay, so if we look at academic, I'm sorry. If we look at academic achievement in English for all schools, we're at a level one. We look at for achievement gap, English, we are level one except for the middle school. And at that level two, and that is for English, and remember, the target is 75% for English. So right now, we are at a level two for three of our subgroups that were at level two and one of them at a level three. If we look at academic achievement math, we have all level ones. However, the high school for math, we pulled from the three-year collective cumulative rate data. And then our achievement gap in math, we were level two for high school and the middle school for math. And the high school is just one subgroup at a level three. And the middle school is also with one subgroup at a level three. So to let you know, before I continue with these level twos, we just had a professional development with our admin team that is aligning our plan to the accreditation process. So we are updating our plans each year. And this year, definitely with these level twos. The academic achievement and science, we're all level one. And like I said, chronic absenteeism is waived this year. It will continue for 2223, our next accreditation year, which will be 2324. Then our graduation and completion index is level one and our dropout rate is level one. So the next slide breaks it down just a little bit more with percentages. The asterisk again indicates rate selected cumulative three-year, your 1718, 1819, 22 school year. And remember that two of those years were waived by the State Department. Okay, so if we look at, and I wanted to do a kind of a comparison. It's not really apples to apples, but I just kind of want to do a comparison between our 1920 accreditation year and our 2223 accreditation year, which was school year 1819 and then 2122 school year. So for our English target, 75%, you can see we improved almost in every school with an asterisk, which is, we use the three-year rate for the middle school for our English. For math, we almost did the same, almost improved our scores. Science, in every school, we use the cumulative rate. And then, like I said, for the chronic absenteeism, we are waived. But however, I wanted to put the scores there. And all schools are being notified of projection, of how we can project and get these rates up. The target for chronic absenteeism is less than or equal to 15%. And then our graduation and completion index, we use the cumulative three-year rate at 94.62. And that is, the target for that is greater than or equal to 88%. And then our dropout rate, it's using the cumulative three-year rate. And that is less than or equal to 6%. So we're pretty much on target with everything. And then the last slide, I just did a comparison of some surrounding schools and with the state of Virginia as well. And as you look at it, you know, we're definitely doing well in English compared to the surrounding counties. And math and science across the board in the state of Virginia is low. And everyone has been made aware of that through our state superintendent. And we are definitely updating our school improvement plans to adjust to that as well. So that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I just want to reiterate that without everyone's help over these three years, we wouldn't have these scores. And I'm just so appreciative of everyone's teamwork in getting us to this place.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. I had, do any of my colleagues have any questions, comments? Yes, okay, I have questions as well. Go ahead, Ms. Rolls.
I'm sorry, I think I missed it. We have met before. Could you say again what your position is?
I am the Coordinator of Testing and Instructional Support.
Okay. And you mentioned 75% and 70% for math. Can you explain what we're measuring there? Is that 75% of the students tested at grade level or above, or what exactly?
Yes, 75% of, say your question again.
So for instance, you see King George High School. And this year, this is 95%. So that means 95% of our students tested at grade level or above for English, or?
Pass rate, yes.
Okay. Let me scroll up here, see if there's others.
Can I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I had a question along those lines. So on, so on, so understanding that the English, the math and the science pass rates are the 75%, the 70% and the 70%, how, where did the numbers on the comparison slide that has King George at, for English, that said 76 compared with the other surrounding areas in the state of Virginia at 73? How does that compare, is that compared to the 75?
That's as a division.
Across all of the schools, right?
Yes, that's a division pass rate. I broke it down on the slide for each school.
Understood. Does, so for across all the schools, if I'm looking at, so is the 76, say, looking at English for 2022, 20, or let's see, 2021, 22, how does that 76 for English compare with the data on slide nine? For English?
I guess I don't understand what you're saying.
So the English column there for all of our schools for 2022, 2023, like 95, 83, 86, 90, 87, are those numbers used to get the 76? Where does the 76 come from in the comparison?
I did get the 76% from the state Department of Ed scores.
Okay.
And goes into that, the eighth grade writing goes into that. So the cumulative three-year for the middle school is lower for the current year. But I took the high, we take the highest score at that percentage rate. I would have to get back to you to give you like a mathematical equation.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Yep, all right, thank you.
I have some questions, Madam Chair. You're to be commended for accreditation, King George County Schools. But I have two questions. I think it's slide number eight. Accreditation results by school quality indicators. So you have King George Middle School at level two and King George High School at level two with math. King George Middle School with English level two. What are the subgroups in level two? I'm just curious. Yes.
Okay, so the middle school for English, it's three subgroups. Black, economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities.
And what about the high school?
The high school for math is students with disabilities.
What's the professional development? You mentioned professional development for the areas that had the gaps. What's the professional development? I'm just curious.
So she was, what she was mentioning was the professional development of updating our school improvement plans so that each school will focus on those subgroup areas. But the professional development was not for the subgroup areas, per se. It was to develop a plan to address the subgroups and to address the data from the accreditation process.
Very good, thank you.
Looks like the only question I had was about, I don't know the slide number here, but we're talking about the indicators and the achievement gap. So what is the achievement gap? What are we measuring the distance between?
Can you break that down a little bit more, what you're trying to ask?
So indicators, we say academic achievement. And I understand that we said it's the pass rate for the different.
Are all the subgroups?
Well, but then there's also achievement gap. So gap is, what's the gap between?
Well, I don't know. I'll have to get back to you on that. It's just, that's what the indicator is called.
So isn't it just the difference between the different subgroups? It's the gap between the different subgroups. So within that achievement gap, yeah, go ahead.
We have eight subgroups. And it's the achievement gap of all the subgroups.
Between the subgroups, like your top achievement and your bottom achievement?
The federal, whenever they come out with the target, the subgroup will have a different target. The state has the target of the three targets, reading, math and science. But for the achievement gap, it's just the English and math.
So you mentioned federal and state. So achievement gap, who's driving what's acceptable here? I mean, it's done at the Commonwealth level, right? So what role is the federal government having that? They did anything?
The federal government makes the policies and the procedures and the state follows it, whatever the school board decides of how to implement it. And right now, they are actually discussing in how 981, the methodology of growth for next year. So they've got a lot of questions and they're going through all that. So this might change for next year accreditation, what it looks like.
Okay, I would have thought that accreditation was done only at the state level. But yeah, I would be curious to see what influence the federal government has on that. So that's an accurate shot to you.
Not with their targets yet.
That's something they do annually?
They do.
Okay, any further questions?
If I could just add, Madam Chair, I do want to take this opportunity to make sure that we appreciate these numbers. If you consider the backdrop, we're coming off of COVID. Go to, go home and figure out how to learn. And in our business, being able to connect and communicate is of the utmost importance. So to try to figure out how to provide an education to students that was at 1.100% virtually, and then it, just as challenging, or some would say more challenging, a hybrid model of education. To do all of those things in these last couple of years, I think it's commendable to not only our school division, but all of our stakeholders, our parents who, in many instances, had their child, their children on their laps, teaching them through this phase of our life. It drew, it's really something amazing to see what King George County and King George County Public Schools was able to do, given the hurdles and the challenges we had in the last couple of years in comparison to our surrounding counties and these accreditation ratings. I think it's just wonderful and don't want to miss that opportunity to say thank you to everyone who took part in that. So thank you, guys.
I agree.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Certainly, sorry, Mr. Bush.
That's all right. In these achievement gaps, it usually is defined as statistically significant. I just wonder, what is that, what is that actual significance, the statistics? Is that making sense, my question? No? Okay, the gap between two different groups is usually defined as being statistically significant. And I'm wondering what, how Virginia defines that.
I would have a question on how they define it.
Okay, that's all right. I can look it up. I'm sure it's online. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Bush?
No, that's all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. Certainly excellent data to see. I know folks were excited when we read the Freelance Star article showing, you know, we were not one of the We read the Freelance Star article showing, you know, we were not one of the schools in the area that was unaccredited. So certainly know that is a mega accomplishment, given what we've gone through the last couple of years. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't want that to go unknown.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to our discussion items this evening. So first, we have the epidemiology laboratory capacity reopening schools grant supplement. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's a mouthful. So the topic is epidemiology laboratory capacity reopening schools grant supplement. So again, this is an allocation made available through the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act. A little bit of background, this was to allow schools to safely open and remain open for in-person instruction and to maximize in-person learning days. So public health departments are the recipients of these funds, but eighty-five percent of these funds must be allocated to school divisions. The resources that become available with these funds are the, the funds to use, use to detect and prevent the transmission of COVID-19 within the schools. They're used for screening, testing, prevention strategies, coordination, management, technical assistance, monitoring, data collection, and reporting activities. All of those activities through the health department and through the school division have been possible to move forward with the allocation of these funds. King George County Schools' second allocation of these funds can be up to three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which should be spent between August first, twenty-twenty-two, and July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. These funds can be used for new and existing staff, supporting COVID response, enhancing school-based technologies, improving air quality through portable HEPA equipment, and general supplies supporting COVID-related responses. These funds will be used exclusively for the purposes mentioned. Again, as we have in the past, King George County School Finance Office requires the school board approval to create these new account codes to manage these funds. So it would be my recommendation to the board to approve a motion to accept three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars in epidemiology laboratory capacity reopening schools funds for the perfect, for the purposes specified, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Or comments? Mr. Bush?
No.
All right. Dr. Boyd, is this time sensitive? Would it be preferable that we approved this this evening?
It would be preferable, yes.
Okay, I'm willing to entertain a motion if anyone would like to.
I move that we accept three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars in ELC reopening schools funds for the purpose specified.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have a SIP review. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Madam Chair. Sorry, Mr. Bush, that you don't have the handouts. I apologize. Board members in, in attendance, I gave you a handout at the beginning of the meeting. Again, as, as I've just begun to work through some of the capital improvement plan improvements through the school division, I just wanted to make sure that we touch base a little bit with the board, talk about where we've been, where we are, and where we, we are going, and really entertain any feedback from board members about most specifically where you'd like to go. So if you remember correctly, at the end of last school year, really kind of in the summer timeframe, we presented our capital improvement plan to the Board of Supervisors. If you take a look at that top page, I think the second section down would be King George County Schools. And originally, we requested the preschool replacement, Potomac Elementary School ADA Playground, school bus replacement, access control system at Potomac Elementary School, the repaving of parking lots and driveways, and then repairs to the priest, the existing preschool roof. If you turn the page, you'll see what was approved by the Board of Supervisors this year. If you look down about halfway down that page, you'll see that the initial adoption was the approval of the purchase of school buses for five hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. They, they've started the process of taking a look at our needs for the preschools. So what was approved was a preschool needs assessment, and that was in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. And then also, the access control system for Potomac Elementary School was approved for seventy-five thousand dollars. If you turn the page quickly, you'll see the motion, the final motion of approval also included the ADA playground for Potomac Elementary School. So just to make the board aware at this point, Mr. Clift at the school board office, our maintenance director, is working on securing the appropriate equipment for the Potomac Elementary School ADA Playground. Valerie at the bus garage is aware of the money allotted for the school bus purchase, and she's working through that right now. Hillary, also with technology, is working steadfast on the access control system at Potomac Elementary School. And I have worked with the county on making sure that we get the ball rolling with the preschool needs assessment, which Wednesday of this week I'll be meeting with, we have a virtual call with Mosley Architecture to make sure that we begin the conversations that we need to have about the needs we'll have for our new preschool moving forward. So that's where we have been, that's where we are currently in that process, just to give the board an update. And then also, as we start to make those plans for next year, I'd like to get some, it doesn't have to be tonight, but some board feedback on some other possible projects or things that we need to consider moving forward when it comes to capital improvement. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions? Mr. Bush?
No. Thank you for all your work, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Good to see the, us getting started on the, on the preschool needs assessment. I know that's been a topic for quite a while, so glad to see that on the, on the list. All right, next we have our policy manual updates. All right. Okay, so we will begin. I will walk through them. If anyone has any questions or comments on the policy of the moment, please speak up. So first, for consideration, we have policy manual BBFA, conflict of interests and disclosure of economic interests.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If, there's two of them, actually. One of them has to do with, oh, page five, right at the end, is talking about nepotism. In other words, I should say anti-nepotism rules relating to school board members and superintendents. And it's the last paragraph, and it's a very small thing. But I know that many of us sometimes are spouses, are substitutes, or teachers. But in this last part, and it explains all that, it says the assistant, the superintendent certifies that he had no involvement with the hiring decision. That's if there's a new person coming on as a substitute that's related to a board member or coming on as a teacher. The superintendent has to certify in writing that he had no part in the hiring process, which I understand. But then there's a second one, the assistant superintendent certifies to the members of the board in writing that the recommendation is based upon merit and fitness, and all that's fine. But my question is, what happens if there's no assistant superintendent? Is the superintendent, and this is more of a question maybe for, for the VSB, I'm not sure if there's no assistant superintendent, is the only thing that's needed is the, that the superintendent certifies that there was no involvement in the hiring decision? That's a question.
Certainly, that's a good question. I guess, Dr. Boyd, do you have any insight into that at this time?
Not at this time. I, I totally understand the question and appreciate it. I think, I think Mr. Bush is exactly correct. If we don't have, currently, we don't have an assistant superintendent. So typically, I think in the language in policy, it will say something to the effect of superintendent and/or his designee. Maybe that's something that we could?
Could have added.
Yeah, I would, that's exactly what I was thinking, Dr. Boyd. I just want to hear an opinion first. And I think if we maybe, I, I don't see a need for that second paragraph, is that if the superintendent certifies it, that that should be enough, that way, in case, there must be many divisions that may not have an assistant superintendent. So we may want to add what you just suggested, Dr. Boyd.
Okay, I'd be happy to do so if that's the direction of the board.
Certainly. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
I have a second one, unless somebody else has something, mine's on page six. Anybody else have something before then, or do you want me to just go on?
Go ahead.
All right. To me, this may be a small one, but it's, well, to me, it is a big one, to others it may be small. But I'm curious why all this his and her changes all throughout. I know this has been a discussion in a lot of schools throughout the United States right now, but why are we changing that? Because there's no law against using pronouns. So why are we having to change everything? I just feel as though if we're doing it here, we're going to do this throughout all of our policies from now on. I would suggest that we not change the pronouns, just leave them as they are, because they don't break any laws.
And I agree. The, if you look at the explanation of changes, the reason this is updated was to change definition of gift. And then just went ahead and made these extra unnecessary edits. So I would.
So what's the, what is, what's the harm of changing, I mean, the actual content of the policy is not being changed by changing it from his or her to the board of members or employees' official duties? I don't, I don't really see why there's an issue with that, the board member, member regardless, or employee.
Why did they change it?
Right, so it doesn't change the meanings. Why are we even just changing this? Just to change it?
I mean, I agree with you, Chair. So why did they change it? I mean, I don't see unnecessary, what, should we make a change just for change sake?
I don't know. Any other comments?
Well, if we want to approve this next time, I would ask that we get a copy in the next packet that doesn't have those changes or excluded, so that we have a markup and a clean copy that we can approve next time. Because I won't prove removing the gendered pronouns out of this page.
Ms. Hawk, do you have any comment on the matter?
Yes, I do. Since this is our discussion framework for this, I'd like certainly some time to review what went into the thinking behind this and, and whether there was any discussion at the House level. I'm quite sure there was. So I would like to review the House bill, you know, before we certainly, before we make any decisions at this level.
How about we bring this one back for further discussion at our next meeting? Would that be suitable?
I thought all of them were being brought back.
Well, for discussion, they typically come from this.
I believe you're right, Madam Chair. For discussion, I don't mind bringing it back, but I would not want to see it as an action item unless we made the changes that myself and Mr. Rolls would suggest. So I agree with you, Ms. Hawk. If this comes back as a discussion item and for, with more investigation, I think that's totally appropriate.
So I'm unclear on what the preference is. There seems to be an objection to bringing it back for discussion, even though it's unclear as to what we want to approve at this time?
I, Madam Chair, I suspect we're all in, we're in agreement that we're bringing back for discussion next time.
I certainly don't want any changes made in what's being brought back until we have time to pursue information.
So let's bring it back for discussion at our next meeting, yes.
Sounds good.
Here, one, just question to clarify what Ms. Hawk is saying. Are you intending to call VSB or just look at the law? I'm just curious what other research that you're?
Maybe a variety of things.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, would you like me to just hold on the initial recommendation of updating the assistant superintendent section as well before we bring it back?
I think we all agreed that one made sense, unless there were objections.
No, I think that would be good. I think that's just further clarifying things. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
So to be clear, you're just going to strike the assistant superintendent part out, is what we're?
Correct. That's what, as I understand it.
Yes.
All right, next for consideration is policy BDA, regular school board meetings. All right, if there are no questions, next is?
Just a minute, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just a moment. I'm scrolling down. I made notes and I wanted to make sure. No, go ahead, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, policy BDB, special school board meetings. Next is policy BDCA, calling and certification of closed meetings. All right, policy BDDC, agenda preparation and dissemination.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a problem. I, not a problem, but in that first paragraph where it says any member of the school board may submit items for inclusion on the proposed agenda, we had this discussion there at the beginning of the year. And I would like it to be, if it's clearly understood by the board that as a school board member submits an item for inclusion on the agenda, that it will be placed on the agenda, unless there's a lot of agenda items, which I think is obvious. And you would call the, the board member to talk to him about maybe putting it on the next item. I just want to be sure, and I would like maybe even to include, any member of the school board may submit items for inclusion which will be placed on the proposed agenda. But if it's understood that that's automatically going to be done, then I don't have a problem with this. It's more of an understanding by this board, because when I first read this eight, eight months ago, I thought it was very clear that any board member can submit an item for agenda, and it would be placed on the agenda. But apparently, that was not clear.
So I had a question about this one as well. Considering we, in May, at our training session adopted, or generated, and then we adopted our, our board norms and protocols that specified the process for, for submitting items on the agenda. So I was actually going to suggest we updated this one to refer to our board norms and protocols that have been adopted. And then that carrying forward, right, would be, that, it could change with the will of the board at that time as like future boards adopt their own board norms and protocols.
Yeah, so we would bring this back then for discussion item after we looked at the norms and protocols that we approved in May?
Bring it back. Well, so I don't know what we need to look at. We all adopt, you know, we all were a part of the decision, the discussion for generating our norms and protocols, and then we all adopted them.
Okay, I'm fine with that, as long as we understand that this is here, but we would follow the norms and protocols that we adopted at that meeting in May. I'm fine with that. Just want to make sure it's understood.
All right, I guess what I'm saying is I would recommend updating the language in this one. Instead of saying that second sentence, to replace that second sentence with something to the effect of that, you know, the agenda items for inclusion on the proposed agenda are submitted and, I don't know, implemented in accordance with the King George School Board norms and protocols.
Very good. I like that very much, yes.
Okay, make that change. Okay, great, thank you. All right. Next policy is policy BDDG, minutes. Policy IGAJ, confusing, driver education. Policy IJD, college and career readiness.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question about this, and maybe Dr. Boyd can fill me in. This is, I love this policy, obviously. I think most educators would, that we want to help our students prepare for the future after they leave the division. But I'm wondering why there was no inclusion or even a mention about homeschool and religious exemption students in this? Because I would think that it should be made clear that they can also access this, especially as it states in the first paragraph, this range of educational academic experiences related to college, so on, and career readiness. I think that, I just feel as though it should be a mention, because we are supporting, obviously, homeschoolers and religious exemption students at home. And they, many of them do use some resources from the division. And I'm just wondering if it should be something added here, just as something to encourage the people who are in homeschool situations and religious education, they can also take advantage of this by contacting the division. So it's a discussion right now, but I would like to see maybe some sort of sentence added, unless somebody else has another idea, but some sort of recognition that they can notify us. um, added unless somebody else has another idea, but some sort of recognition that they can notify us. Such as that, uh, homeschool students and religious exemption students will have, um, the, um, informa- if they wish information about these readiness activities, that we given the opportunity to do, to participate or to do so by contacting the, uh, the administration, something along those lines.
Any comments on that, Dr. Boyd?
If it's the will of the board, I can certainly include that, uh, sentence.
Are there any, well, I mean, would there be any, are there any conflicts of interest in the policy, like the way it's written, if that were added, like about those, um?
Those services?
Services being shared.
No, uh, not that I see on the surface. We certainly do offer, uh, services to include college and career readiness to students that, uh, are homeschooled or are religiously exempt. So I can't see anything on the service that would, uh, be in conflict.
Okay.
I think at, at this point, I certainly would ask Dr. Boyd to run this by, uh, Mrs. Fisher. Um, and Mrs., Mrs. Hill, uh, just to make sure that, uh, there are, there are many items that are reflected in college and career readiness. And, uh, some may involve, um, being in the school setting. Um, I, I think I just would prefer having a review by those ladies before we make any changes.
And I'd also be interested in knowing what services are provided by, if you could, for everybody to hear that. Imagine there are some differences between, uh, on, on, in the division and outside as well. So I measure some differences between services, how they provide to, you know, homeschool religious exemption students versus students who are in the division. So it'd be good to know the difference where the.
Yeah, I can tell you, you know, knowing from experience, there's, there's a lot of programs that our counselors have access to and our students have access to. Uh, Virginia Wizard, Naviance. Uh, I see some students nodding over there. Um, so these, these are programs that, um, connect you with, uh, different information for colleges. Uh, also, uh, career inventories with your interests and really start, uh, so the way that it works at the in, on the school level is in the seventh grade, they start this kind of plan where they start to, well, in the elementary school, but officially on paper in the seventh grade, they start this plan that looks at their, uh, interests as far as careers moving forward. And then they project their courses throughout high school to make sure it matches those interests they have as far as a profession moving outside of, uh, high school. Uh, and much of that information now is run through mostly Naviance on the second, on the secondary level. I would have to look at, I think your point is, is right, Ms. Hawk, as far as access to that program for students outside of the school division would be one place I would start there.
And Ms. Hawk, I agree, there may be some things that would be very difficult to do because we do them during the school day or so. But it's still, uh, I guess my point was is to offer them some assistance as some of these homeschoolers and religious exemption students begin to prepare for their futures, um, after they finish their, their, um, schooling. And I, I know there may be some issues and we may not be able to offer everything, but boy, everything that we can offer obviously will be advantageous to our whole county here, not just simply our division, but to all of the people that live in the county. So I agree with you, Ms. Hawk. There may be a few things, but I'd sure like to look at, we can offer as much as possible.
All right.
So are we going to bring this back, Madam Chair, with some recommendations from Dr. Boyd? Is that correct?
Yes. Sounds like a little bit homework and then we'll get a recommendation next time.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next, policy JRC A school service providers use of student personal information. Any comments? All right. Okay. So it sounds like we'll have all of those back for action consideration next week with the exception of the regular school board meetings, policy BDA, which will be on the discussion item list again. Is that correct?
EBF A, was that right?
BDA regular school board meetings.
Madam Chair, I think as far as IJD, since, uh, Dr. Boyd is going to be telling us more about that and proposing language, having strike markup language versus like.
Okay. Have that one come back for discussion as well. Yep. That makes sense. All right, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Bring those two back. Okay. All right. We will move on to our information items. We'll start with committee reports. Ms. Hawk? All right. Dr. Cutright, there we, what, Mr. Rolls?
None.
Mr. Bush?
None.
All right. I have two. I'll make up for everyone else. Um, so on September 27th, I had the pleasure of attending the Technology Advisory Committee meeting. Um, so this was the first kickoff with the new advisory committee that was approved at an earlier meeting. So that was great to meet everyone, a few new teachers, some new faces. And got a couple of updates from Ms. Hap on a variety of things. So covering a couple of topics that were new. So she gave an update on the, our one-to-one, our device ratio at the high school and the middle school. And that we're almost one-to-one at the elementary schools. And it was interesting getting updates and hearing from, um, staff about how that had been implemented, right? Like pulling, uh, it turns out if, you know, the, you know, uh, laptops were pulled out of the carts and distributed, we had many to go around anyway. There's a lot of, there was a lot of creativity and outside the box thinking to make that happen. So that was really exciting to hear about. There were some updates on the, on the front entrance advancements, the new, the video intercom systems that are going in. Um, you know, that the, that are going to kind of tighten up some of that. So I know that, that, uh, King George L. Sealston and King George Middle School, those advancements have been completed and that Potomac and the high school are pending. There was an update that at the high school, I know there's been some ongoing discussion about the teachers transitioning to laptops from desktops, which I understand and recognize is a big change. Um, and so anyway, just kind of hit on some lessons learned, some of the pains and the gains associated with that, but it sounded like a step in the right direction. And then commenting on the online enrollment forms this year, um, and the different difference that that made. And then a couple of things to focus on going forward. So there has been ongoing discussion about the computer science standards and, uh, how they get included in instruction going forward. And then, um, a number of other, you know, just, um, general discussions. And then there, you know, there is definitely going to be a focus this year on updating the technology. Um, oh my goodness, the, the technology, like a strategy, the strategy that to go along as a complement to the county, um, to the school strategic plan that was put together last year and presented to us as a board. So anyway, looking at tying some of that up, right, and making sure things are aligned. So I know that I look forward to seeing how that progresses throughout the rest of this year. So that's a lot of good progress. And then last week, I attended the Title I Advisory Committee meeting on October 4th. And so again, also the new advisory committee for the year. So that was exciting. There were a number of new, new participants. So Ms. Harris gave some updates on the programs across the schools. There is a new reading curriculum. There's a new reading, new reading curriculum for the intervention program, which was piloted in the summer schools this year. And apparently has gotten, had been, was very well received. So that has been implemented as well as, um, then an update on math and some of the changes, um, to the intervention, intervention provided there. So they gave some updates on the different, um, the different math intervention programs, the use of Dreambox and a couple of other things. I know I hear about Dreambox. My kids enjoy it. So, um, that's neat. And then the family involvement events are always exciting events. So in the past, I guess, two years, right, we've done the curbside events. And so looking to move back into getting the interactions in person with the families and the staff and the kids. And so King George Elementary has a camp learn some more event planned on October 12th from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. So I guess that's next. No, that's this week. That's this week. So they're going to have sessions available to parents to learn more about PALS, VCRP, the standards-based report cards, SOLs and a variety of, uh, a variety of other, other topics. So folks can visit the book fair, view the art walk, participate in reading and math activities, and they will be providing a grab and go dinner. Potomac is working on finalizing their plans. Their event is likely going to be on October 26th. And Sealston's Title One event will take place Thursday, November 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00. They're also doing a camping theme. I guess it's fall. So everyone's excited to get outdoors and do things. Um, theirs is going to be, and also going to be information-based. So providing information on the supplemental programs such as Hegarty, Handwriting Heroes, Reading Eggs and Reading Plus in addition to some reading and writing-based activities. So again, very exciting to hear all that is going on, um, in the Title One world. Um, and I'm sure the community will, you know, enjoy the, the family involvement events that they've got planned. So.
Mate, mate, would you repeat the King George Elementary date?
The date, yes, certainly. King George L. is this Wednesday, the 12th from 5:30 PM to 7:00. Yep, certainly. All right. And that is all I had. All right. And next we have a public notification. And so I will address that. So the King George County School Board will be conducting interviews for the position of superintendent from October 25th, 2022 to November 9th, 2022. And these interviews will be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia Section 2.2 dash 3712. And this time we'll go over to you, Dr. Boyd, for the superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, a couple of notes of importance. Um, tomorrow, parents, uh, school board members, report cards go home. Uh, so in our grades K through five, we've got paper report cards and, and in our secondary levels, we have digital report cards. So this is always a great opportunity to, uh, stop and pause and take a look at the progress our students and our children have made thus far in the school year. We are a quarter of the way through this school year. So, uh, it's an important time to, uh, take a look at progress and make sure things are going in the right direction for everybody. So that, those will be coming home tomorrow. Uh, later this week, the PSAT, um, will be given to all ninth graders at the high school. So we've done this for a few years now. Uh, and this is a great opportunity for students to, uh, take an eye, take, or get an idea, I should say, of where they stand as far as the SAT assessment moving forward. It also gives colleges and students, uh, the first opportunity really where they connect with each other and, uh, start to have correspondence on set post-secondary options, uh, after high school. So it's a great opportunity for our ninth grade students. Uh, the high school does a wonderful job pulling this all together. It's quite an operation. So that'll take place this Wednesday and, uh, Sandra Duff is heading that. So we are in good hands and that'll go off very smoothly, I'm sure. It is National School Lunch Week, so take the opportunity to get your school lunch. Um, now that we're coming out of COVID, the school lunches have gotten remarkably better, I can say from personal experience. Uh, and the variety at the middle school with the salad bar addition and at the high school with salad bar and subbar. Uh, things are moving in the right direction when it comes, I'm getting nods from our students. So I'm feeling good about that. Um, and then my final note, the thing I, I, I would, uh, mention is I had an amazing opportunity this morning to go over to Potomac Elementary School with Ms. Beverly Lemmons. If you remember, she is our, uh, Division Wellness Coordinator. Uh, and we had the chance during this teacher workday to look at the, uh, PBIS program that Potomac offers. Top-notch, top-notch program, uh, really amazing. Uh, it's, it's been a program in operation for a number of years, but every year they continue to improve it. They're using this online, uh, application system this year. They have a school store running out of it. Every student in every classroom has a QR code. And they can record points and earn points, uh, by receiving, uh, QR scans. And, um, they have all kinds of amazing things that have been donated from the community, uh, in their school store. And all of the teachers also have their own store where students can change their classroom job or, um, call the teacher by their first name is one of the prizes. And, uh, it's just a number of amazing cool things. And everybody in that school seems really engaged in the program. Uh, certainly something I'd like to see, uh, across the division moving forward. Great, great program. So I'll stop there and, uh, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right. Moving on to our board comment, our student reps. It is great as always to have you here again. So we will start with, um, Jackson. How are you doing this evening?
I'm good. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Bush. Um, so the past couple of weeks at King George High School, there has been a wave of sickness going on. I don't know, maybe just a change in the weather. But, um, there's been a multitude of students and teachers unfortunately out. Um, on Friday, there was an unexpected fire alarm. Um, students, they'd exit promptly and swiftly. So I think that is due to the fire alarm drills that we have, which is great. Um, last Friday, there was a home game, pink out game. I was unfortunately not able to attend, but I've heard that there was great fervor in the air and that is probably also due to the new in the morning now, the band plays on Fridays to kind of give that spirit of Friday Night Lights and, um, winning the football games in early in the morning. Um, tomorrow, there is also a game that was previously postponed due to threats of violence. So we pray that this game is able to be conducted graciously and without any violence. So that is all from me.
All right. Thank you, Jackson. Devin, how are you? What's going on in the middle school?
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, so before I touch on that, I'd like to, um, in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'd like to say that my family and I got to attend the Powwow at Belgro Planetation, um, Saturday. Um, it was definitely a wonderful experience. There were, uh, tribes from, I think as far as the Midwest that came specifically there. And there was dancing, there was all sorts of food, there was music, there was history. And so for any of those who are interested, I totally recommend coming to it next year. All right. So for this school, so the first thing that I want to say is that, um, been conducting at the middle school, uh, several spirit days and spirit weeks over the past nine weeks. And I want to highlight that we've been, um, we've been, uh, going over, uh, things such as Rev, Red Ribbon Week, um, anti-bullying, uh, slogans and, uh, breast cancer awareness. Uh, as this is, as October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, next, I want to give recognition to all the teachers, um, for getting us students prepared for the nine weeks tests. Cause that's definite, definitely been a hassle to all those eighth graders at the middle school, having one every day except for Friday last week. So, um, I'd like to point out that they have made it not just a learning environment, but something that can actually be looked forward to. Um, so I'd like to commend the teachers for that. And also I want to highlight that this Friday, we're going to have our first club day, which, um, a lot of students have been talking about. Uh, we've, uh, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday this week that we were sent a slideshow of over 40 different clubs for us to choose from. And from my understanding, uh, of it, on Friday, we're basically going to have some kind of assembly for the first half of the day and just clubs for the next half and then it's the weekend. So, uh, I'd like to recognize everyone who thought of this, this idea and put this into effect. So, thank you to all those who did that. That's all I, that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you, Devin. Thank you both. Great to hear what's going on.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bush, we'll start with you since we normally do and so that we don't forget about you online.
Well, first I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Dee Strauss. She always does such a marvelous job. And it's, uh, I would say of all the organizations that I hear about, I think Dec is the one I hear the most about, which is wonderful. Um, and thank you for the students that were here that let us in the pledge and for, um, actually introducing themselves and what they do. It was marvelous. And again, thank you, Ms. Strauss, for all your work. Um, Jackson and Devin, you do a marvelous job, um, representing your schools and I appreciate that very much. It's, um, it, it's such a pleasure to see young men who are willing to take such strong not only leadership roles, but also being such a servant to those who you represent. And thank you for doing that. You're doing a wonderful job. And that's all. Oh yeah. Thank you, um, Dr. Boyd. And I wasn't there for the, uh, Fall Festival. But I, I'm sure it went very well. And I'm sure there's a massive amount of work involved with that. And, um, so I'm sorry I had to miss it. I was, uh, on the airplane for six hours flying to California. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you. And I want to, uh, echo Mr. Bush in, in saying that, um, I've been coming to board member, board meetings for a lot of years. Be back before my period of time as a board member. And you guys are just super, you're some of the best we've ever had. And I just want to congratulate you both on it. And congratulate your parents for, um, keeping you on this straight and narrow. Um, I want to say a, a special thank you to our. on this straight and narrow. I want to say a special thank you to our DECA officers. It is so delightful to see a group of young women in leadership positions. That's very, very impressive, and I'd like you to tell them that we want them to continue being role models, Ms. Strauss. And I want to commend the band and all involved with the band. They presented so well during Fall Festival, and it's, I know from long years ago band experience, it's hard to march and play and keep a straight direction at the same time, and they did a fantastic job of that. So I was very proud to be there with my six grandchildren. I wasn't able to ride the float with these folks, but it was fun catching some candy for a change instead of throwing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's already been said by Mr. Bush and Ms. Hock that the DECA students did an outstanding job with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm very impressed with their marketing and career development strategies. And thank you, Ms. Strauss, for also bringing to our attention that we need to look at the calendar in November, and we'll certainly do that. Like to thank Ms. Stacy Hildebrand for her presentation on accreditation, and I might add, in order to continue with accreditation, we must continue to provide essential programs of high quality for all of our students. That means having qualified teachers in English, math, and science, and I'm glad to see that you're doing professional development to address those areas with special needs students and the other subgroups as well, that we really need to level the playing field for those students. Also, in the month of September, we had 59 shout-outs to King George County employees, and thank you for taking the time to recognize all the outstanding employees that we have and how they serve our students every day. And Dr. Boyd's already mentioned that we have National School Lunch Week, and please join us in thanking our dedicated staff for everything they do for our students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Rolls?
I'll also say how much I appreciate you from DECA. It's a very impressive organization, and enjoyed the Fired Up shirts. Actually, it was the motto for my graduating class at the Air Force Academy, so it's great to see another generation of Fired Up scholars. And like everyone else here, enjoyed the Fall Festival, and the band did do a great job on the football field as well as after the parade, too. So, great job all. That's all I have.
Certainly. All right. I want to, I want to start by, I think, echoing earlier sentiment, but just to, again, commend everyone on the, our accreditation status as a division. I know that's a major, major accomplishment and a big hurdle, and I know we've heard a lot over the course of COVID about the learning gap and the challenges, and how, you know, our students, I mean, not just at King George, right, but everywhere are behind, and the challenges associated with that. I know on Friday night, I went out with some friends who teach in Maryland and other places, and commenting just the challenges with kids, right? I know it's not just us, and the fact that we were able to, we have the data to show that we actually improved in some areas despite that, and certainly didn't fall particularly, like by any significant amounts in others. So I just, I think that says, you know, a great amount about, about how much work our staff has, have done, how, you know, just how dedicated the entire division has been. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who's helped make that happen. And I also thoroughly enjoyed the Fall Festival. It was fun riding on the, I guess, the truck this year, not the wagon. We did not learn, apply our lesson learned last year about candy. I think we were more strategic in our dissemination of it, but we needed more. So, anyway, word to the wise, next year we'll get more candy. And I agree, the band was amazing this year. The band's always great, but the band was particularly awesome on Saturday. I know, I remember being in the marching band, you know, and, you know, marching around and all that, and it just, it was, it was great. My kids thoroughly enjoy it. We haven't been able to go to a football game yet, but that is on our agenda. I was sitting, watching the band, scrolling through the King George High School football schedule on my phone, so I could commit to my kids when we're going to the next game. So, anyway, so looking forward to that. And then a follow-up note about the PBIS program at Potomac. So my kids go to Potomac. I've heard about Hawk Bucks on a nearly daily basis. I haven't downloaded the QR code, or haven't used it to look up, to track them online sometimes with my electronic. I'm kind of over it, but nevertheless, my son, as an example, was really excited to, he cashed in his Hawk Bucks to wear a hat to school one day, so he really wanted to wear his, the Fredericksburg Knats batting helmet that they give you, that you get like fries or chip sin or whatever. Anyway, but it's too big for his head, so he taped it to a baseball hat so that it would fit his head so he could wear it. So he was really excited to wear it to school. So anyone who saw my son, thought he looked like a crazy person, but it was just because he was really excited to wear a hat. So anyway, I just, I know it's a great program. And I also hear about the pieing that's going on and continues to go on. So, anyway, all, all good stuff. So very excited to hear all that. All right, so at this time, we'll make, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitution, substitutes, stipends, and resignations of employees of the school board, a move that we enter closed session.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Bush, all right. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're now in closed session.
Yes, Jesse. Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. Thanks.